Good evening, Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome everyone to the first regular scheduled meeting for a period of City Council Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2018. This time I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt.
I'd love to call your attention to our city attorney, Mr. Matt Holbert.
Hmm? He just did. It didn't sound like it, but he just did.
All right. Anybody called order, I'd like to call Mayor up to the front, please. Mayor will give you the oath of office, if you will, just repeat after me, raise your right hand. "I, James E. Farrakhan Jr."
"I, James E. Farrakhan Jr."
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"That I will faithfully perform the duties of Mayor."
"That I will faithfully perform the duties of Mayor."
"Of the city of Perry."
"Of the city of Perry."
"And that I will support and defend."
"And I will support and defend."
"The charter thereof."
"The charter thereof."
"As well as the Constitution."
"As well as the Constitution."
"And the laws of the state of Georgia."
"And the laws of the state of Georgia."
"And the United States of America."
Thank you. This is my wife Patty and son Mitchell. They have tolerated me being mayor for eight years. And I thought it appropriate that I'm gonna do this one more time. I wanted to thank them both in public. Thank you, I love you both.
And next I'd like to call Councilman, Councilmember Randall Walker, Councilmember Robert Jones, Councilmember Douglas Pineless. Y'all will join me up front, please. You all are gonna swear the oath of office as Councilmember of the city of Perry, if y'all will please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Councilmember of the city of Perry.
Councilmember of the city of Perry.
And that I will support.
I will support.
And defend the charter thereof.
And defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America. Item 3 on the agenda is the roll call, we have a call. Item 4 is the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you're able, would you please rise? For the invocation, I'd like to call on Reverend and Councilman Willie King, a Pike Five Fellowship Church.
Goodbye, yes, please. Oh God, we thank you for another year you brought us into. I pray now that you continue to give us the wisdom and the knowledge that it will deal with the events at our state. We do thank him, we praise him. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt to read us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 5 is the selection of the 2018 Mayor Pro tempore. It's the custom of this body that we elect a mayor pro tempore to fill in for myself during the coming year when I am unable to fulfill certain obligations of the city of Perry. Usually requires them attending various functions in my stead because all of us serve on a part-time basis. Therefore, sometimes my day job gets in the way and I can't tell them no, they keep writing me a check. So I'm gonna need a mayor pro tempore to stand in for me sometime during the year, and it is up to this council to make those selections. So at this time, council, it'd be your pleasure, does someone have a motion to select a mayor pro tempore for the calendar year of 2018?
I move with Randall Walker to be mayor pro tempore for this calendar year.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second for Councilman Randall Walker to be mayor pro tempore. Are there any others? Hearing none. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, raise your hand. I was opposed. Any intentions?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Walker abstains for obvious reasons. The motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Walker. I'm assuming you're willing to serve. I should've asked that first.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's too late now. Thank you. Thank you, council, for that. Item 6 are professional services appointments. Item 6A is the 2018-2019 confirmation of the city attorney. We currently have the firm of Walker, Holbert, Gray &amp; Moore. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Holbert.
Has the city attorney, and they have served as such for quite some time and do a fantastic job. Having said that, council, is there a motion to confirm the city attorney, city attorney being the firm of Walker, Holbert, Gray &amp; Moore, the 2018-2019?
I will.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Holbert. Y'all do a fantastic job, congratulations. We're looking forward to working with you again.
Thank you.
Item 6B is the 2018-2019 confirmation of a municipal court judge. Judge Herb Wells has served in this capacity for quite some time, is willing to serve again. Council, at this time I will entertain a motion that we confirm the appointment of the municipal court judge being Judge Herb Wells.
I will.
Second. Is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6C is the 2018-2019 confirmation of an assistant municipal court judge in those cases in which Judge Wells is not available. Judge Jeff Grube has served in that capacity in years past. At this time, council, I'll entertain a motion that we confirm the appointment of Assistant Municipal Court Judge Jeff Grube.
I will.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 7 are community partner updates. Is there any community partner who wishes to give the city of Perry an update at this time? Item 8 are recognitions and presentations. Item 8A is a proclamation honoring the Church in the Park and the Bridge Church. May I have the respective pastors inform me up front, please?
Pastor Justin Gaston, right? Glad to have you all. In the city of Perry, a proclamation honoring Church in the Park and the Bridge Church, January 2nd, 2018. Whereas, the city of Perry seeks to bring its citizens together and promote unity for all. And whereas, the congregants of the Church in the Park and the Bridge Church, under the leadership of Pastor Jordan Percy and Pastor Justin Gaston, have demonstrated great commitment to this cause. And whereas, the congregants and leadership of Church in the Park and the Bridge Church have been responsible for generating a sense of community togetherness by organizing and promoting various activities that bring people of all races together for worship. And whereas, the congregants and leadership of Church in the Park and the Bridge Church have distinguished themselves by setting an example of service and commitment to their community that is worthy of emulation and high praise. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of Perry do hereby extend special recognition to the congregants of Church in the Park and the Bridge Church and Pastor Jordan Percy and Pastor Justin Gaston for their dedication to their community, for their promotion of harmony and unity, and for their efforts to bring the citizens of Perry together in a manner that crosses a variety of different barriers. So proclaimed this second day of January in the year of our Lord, 2018, signed, James E. Farrakhan Jr., Mayor, City of Perry. Again, gentlemen, thank you very much, and we appreciate the efforts y'all continue to do on behalf of your congregants and the citizens of Perry and this general region all the way around. Thank you.
Y'all don't have to fight over it, I've got another one. Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it. Whoa, 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 I'm out. Stand back up. And I should've done this, and I apologize. Do you have any comments, the pastors?
Go ahead, Justin, you go ahead. I thank you guys so much. I know our slogan is where Georgia comes together, and I think that was Justin and myself, our goal and the end game was to truly bring this community together. We had no idea that it would have far-reaching impacts like it did, but just thank you guys so much for acknowledging it and just maybe making the community even aware of everything that took place. So thank you all.
I second that. Like, we just really want to be an example of what it looks like to actually be in unity. You know, we preach the gospel on what's worse, but I think it's sometimes it really has to show as pastors and as a church how to carry it out and how to live in it. So that's, I think, what we did actually started something that we want to continue for generations to come.
Amen.
That is fantastic. Thank you both, for your efforts. Thank you very much.
Still again.
Item 8B is the introduction of Ms. Haley Myers, the special events coordinator. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Haley Myers, our new special events coordinator. You wanna come on up, Haley? Haley is a Georgia native with extensive background in planning events, implementing events, coordinating large functions, that type of thing. She's had a number of experiences that I think lend herself and her talents and abilities towards the type of direction the city's looking to take with our quality of life amenities and initiatives and things like that. She's worked on some music festivals, she's worked on, you know, food truck-type events, large-scale festivals, just in general. So I think she really has expertise in taking us wherever we want to be as a city. She is a Georgia native. She's a graduate of Georgia College and State University in Milledgeville. And most recently, she worked with Beloved Atlanta, which is a nonprofit organization that provides resources towards victims of human trafficking. So very diverse background. She's looking forward to getting back to Middle Georgia, getting out of Atlanta, and you know, welcome her on board. She started this past week. You can find her down in the dungeon office over there. But she really has hit the ground running, it's been very impressive. She's getting out, she's meeting folks, she's meeting with our community partners, you know, meetings, all that type of thing. And she was actually at the buzzer drop to kind of get a sense of, you know, how we execute our events. And really looking forward to seeing what she comes up with. I know she's been hard at work already on putting together a possible schedule of events for this year. So we, I know I do, and I'm sure y'all will as well, look forward to seeing that, when we bring something to y'all. With that being said, Haley, do you have anything you want to say to our elected officials?
Yeah, I'm so excited to be here. I'm so grateful for the opportunity, and I'm excited to serve Perry and the community.
Glad to lighten the head. Yes, Ms. Myers, thank you for making the decision to come work with us. We think we have something special here. And I hope you have been able to protect that, as you obviously have, and we're looking forward to working with you, and you're having your ideas shine through to make this even more of a special place for our current citizens, the staff, and everyone here, as well as our district, in order to attract more. So thank you very much, and congratulations on choosing the city of Perry.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Glad to have you. Thank you. Item 8C is a presentation of a grant to mayor and council. Mr. Jay Fletcher of Flint Energies. Mr. Fletcher?
Mayor, councilmen, councilpeople, members? My name's Jay Fletcher, I'm with Flint Energies. I'm here on behalf of our board of directors and the 238 employees that we have here in Flint in the region. A little bit about where this grant's coming from. We have what's called unclaimed capital credits, so basically every member pays a little bit of money that helps us sustain the lines each year. And if we don't use that by being cost-efficient, we actually give that money back to them. Well, over the years, you've basically had people that either move away and can't find more, or have money that collects in pennies at the time. And we hold that money back, and we're allowed through the state government to distribute that for education, through our foundation, or through economic development. Well, over the last three years, we've had some huge grant opportunities come available. We funded the I-75 corridor that you guys are a part of, which includes six municipalities and two county governments, which stretches, you know, eight miles up and down the interstate 75 is the focus area. We've also been able to establish the Firestarter Entrepreneurship Program and the Firestarter Fablet, which I'm sure you guys have heard somewhere along the way with some of the presentations. Well, this year, we took some of those funds, and we said, well, we don't have a huge sum of money, so we can't do everything, but if we find partners to find a way to multiply the dollars, and that's the best way to do it. We've gone in and we requested grant applications, and it's not been much of a hard application process, it's just give us an idea of where you want to spend money. And we have selected three government, city governments, Monizuma, Centerville, and the city of Perry to offer a $10,000 grant. You guys have been awarded that grant, and I'm here to like, present that check to you, Mayor.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. And if I can, Mr. Fletcher's been hard at work, I know this is his job, but he also has a passion for making sure that the communities in which Flint serves prosper. And he is going beyond the call, in my opinion, on a personal level as well as a corporate level, in order to make sure that these programs not only get off the ground, but succeed and succeed very nicely. I've been involved in a lot of his efforts, and this is just one small thing, it's not so small from that standpoint, but I wanted to personally thank you for your efforts. Not only for Flint Electric, but for you yourself and your dedication towards those goals. Thank you very much, on behalf of the city of Perry. And please thank Mr. Ray and your board, and all of its employees for making this possible for us. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Item 9A is the Perry Main Street Advisory Board council appointments. We had a conversation regarding this particular council appointment, and it has been asked by a council member for further information. So therefore, at this time, council, I'll entertain a motion that we table this particular appointment for a future meeting. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9B is an appointment to the Perry Housing Authority. You will notice that this item has been on our agenda for some time. There is a reason for that. Obviously, we don't want to make, we want to make sure that we fulfill that obligation. I have made a commitment in order to make this a top priority, and I apologize, not only to council, but to the community for us not being able to achieve this at this point. However, it will be on our agenda at our next regular scheduled meeting, and we anticipate having an appointment at that time. Thank you for your patience. Item 10 are citizens with input. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address council on any matter at this time? Item 11 are consent agenda items. Item 11A, for council's consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the December 18th, 2017 work session, the December 19th, 2017 pre-council meeting, and the December 19th, 2017 council meeting. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. There's a motion and a second, any discussions, changes, changes in discussion regarding these minutes at this time? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12 is old business. Item 12A are ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item 12A1, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Perry by deleting section 2-252(c)(6) in its entirety and adding a new section 2-252(c)(6). Mr. Smith?
Mayor and council, what you have before you tonight for your consideration is a resolution that is essentially a little bit of a housekeeping item with the dissolution of the Perry Downtown Mercs Association. We need to restructure the appointment and the structure of the Main Street Advisory Board and replace the PDMA member with someone. And staff is recommending that we replace that appointee with a downtown business owner or downtown property owner. So someone that has a vested interest in our downtown and making sure that it moves forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Mr. Smith and council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council, this is the second reading at this time for adoption. If you see fit, at this time I will entertain a motion that we do adopt the ordinance that amends the municipal code of the city of Perry by deleting the section and replacing the section as described. There's a motion, is there a second? Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12B, this is an alcohol license application, second reading and adoption. Item 12B1 is the second reading is the application for alcohol license for the calendar year 2018 for beer and wine off premises, retail only, for Stripling's Sausage and Meats Incorporated doing business as Stripling's General Store located at 301 Pag Village Boulevard. The manager's name is Jackie R. Harden. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, there have been no objections to the location or the issuance of this license, and we recommend to so authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, Chief Lynn. I'm assuming this application's passed inspection by you and your crew?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions, Chief Lynn or Mr. Gilmore, concerning this matter? Hearing none. It is a second reading and time for adoption. Council, at this time I will entertain a motion that we approve or adopt the application for the alcohol license for the calendar year 2018 for Stripling's General Store as described. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 13 is any other old business? Item 13A, is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item 13B is any other old business from council members? Mr. Bynum, Grace?
I have none.
Mr. Jones?
None.
Mr. Walker?
None.
Mr. Hunt?
None.
Mr. King?
None.
Thank you. Item 13C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 13D, is any other old business from the assistant city attorney, Mr. Holbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 14 is new business. Item 14A are matters that have been referred from the January 2nd, 2018 pre-council meeting that we had in the conference room upstairs at 5:00. Mr. Gilmore, is anything that needs our attention at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 14B are resolutions for consideration and adoption. 14B is a resolution accepting the maintenance of certain streets' rights of way. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is essentially a housecleaning item as well. After going through a review of city streets and streets that the Georgia Department of Transportation has on their list as new city streets, we determined that there are 21 streets that we either haven't been accepted or we can't find the resolutions for... So this will clean that up and accept those streets. It represents about 4.7 miles of streets that will be added to the Georgia Department of Transportation list of city streets.
Fantastic. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Wood, regarding this resolution? Thank you. Council, at this time I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution accepting the maintenance of certain streets' rights of way as described.
Remove site.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 14B2 is a resolution amending the city of Perry fee schedule. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is to provide for fees for new permits or reviews that were established in the recently adopted land management.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood regarding this resolution? Hearing none. At this time I will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution that amends the city of Perry fee schedule as described.
I will.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 14C is the award bids. Item 14C1 is bid number 2018-08. Mr. Dye?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is our bid for a mostly anticipated splash pad project at Creekwood Park. This is for phase one. ICB Construction Group out of Macon, Georgia is our lowest bidder. In their packet, they included three large projects of significance. Unfortunately, I had opportunity to visit these projects with a favorable review. We are recommended at this time to go with our lowest bidder, along with our architect and design firm, Lowes and Associates, recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item at this time? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Council, at this time I will entertain a motion that we award the bid to the low bidder for an amount of $560,000 to ICB Construction Group out of Macon, Georgia, as described.
Remove.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 14B, we're being asked for the approval of a change order number one relative to the Big Indian Creek walking trail extension. Mr. McMurray?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet you have a change order request from Old Muggy Engineering. This has come up, the staff has reviewed with Old Muggy, to add infrastructure for stormwater on Creekwood Drive and to prevent erosion from the walking trail, which is currently already being built down there. This change order totals to $43,410. That's additional, bringing the total contract for Big Indian Creek Trail to 164,160. That's $164,610. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. McMurray or staff regarding this item? Thank you. Hearing none. Council, at this time I will entertain a motion that we approve the change order in the amount of $43,410 for change order number one for the Big Indian Creek Walking Trail Extension as described.
Remove.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 14- Item 14E is a request to declare a certain city-owned parcel as surplus. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor and council, in your packet is a recommendation from the administration to declare approximately a half acre parcel at the intersection of I-75 and Marshallville Highway as surplus. The city no longer has any need for that, and we recommend that you authorize the surplus process.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions to Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we declare a certain city-owned parcel surplus as described. There's a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, does any member of item 14 new business that needs our attention?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 15 is the other business and supplemental agenda. Item 15A are resolutions for our consideration and adoption. 15A1, this is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the loan with Sonobus Bank for Kumho Tire Company. Gilmore, do you want to light your lights? Council, you may remember, last year, Golden Mountain Gas came to us as one of the five owners of Golden Mountain Gas with a request for a loan in the original amount of $866,719.8 for the purpose of capital improvements that were needed at the time. This has an amortization that has been followed, and because of the law that says that current mayor and councils cannot obligate future mayor and councils, the loan itself must be renewed or approved every year. So this is just that, we are being asked to renew or approve the renewal of the existing, the original loan. The original loan, as I have stated, was $866,719.8, the current balance, is $760.836.760836.07, whatever that is. It is being amortized as agreed, in fact, it is being paid ahead. There are no issues regarding its repayment or anything with the loan. At this time, council is being asked to approve the resolution and the documentation, allowing me as mayor to sign on behalf of city council, and each of you will sign as well, of the resolution that authorizes the renewal of the loan with the Sonobus Bank originally for Kumho Tire Company. But at this time, I will entertain a motion for that resolution and authorization as described. There's a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Gilmore, does any of you under the other business supplemental agenda that needs our attention?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 16, a council member items. Ms. Phantom Grace?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to say briefly that I'm humbled and thankful to be able to serve the citizens of Perry for a central term. The public's confidence is certainly not something to take for granted, and I'm looking forward to four more years to serve them to the best of my ability. And everything I'd just like to say is I'd like to offer our mayor condolences on the passing of his father. It's certainly not something that you can deal with. And in spite of that, he continues to provide the city of Perry with excellent leadership. And Jimmy, I'd just like to say I'm honored to serve alongside you, as I'm honored to serve alongside everybody up on this stage, especially those. That's all. That's all I have.
Actually, we can add words out of here. Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
I can't talk that. Mr. Hunt?
I'd just like to wish all of you a happy, happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. King?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
And Mr. Holder?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 17, our department head or staff items. We'll start with the Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. King?
I have a check for you.
Actually, it's for the Department of Economic Development, but I'm assuming it will eventually end up in your hands.
I'm the Department of Community Development.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. I do have some, an update I wanted to give you regarding permitting for the previous calendar year was quite a good year for the city. From a commercial standpoint, we permitted 14 new construction projects. Those included Tractor Supply, Striplings, Starbucks, and Popeyes, among others. There were 20 alteration permits for commercial, which included the Ichiban Restaurant going into the Public Shopping Center, and several remodels and renovations downtown, including the Chamber Building, Bodega Brew, and Sugar Plum. And we're also getting ready to permit, so starting off 2018 pretty strong as well, getting ready to permit a new Taco Bell on the west side of Interstate 75 of San Diego. Renovations of the old Hibachi Grill on San Diego for an Arby's and a couple of other retail spaces. There's a new jam and a T-Mobile store going in at the Public Shopping Center, so that's beginning to fill out. But the big news, I think, is on the residential side, we had our best year ever with 350 new single-family residential permits. And as I said, that's the best year since we've been keeping track in 2005. That included 71 that came in in March of 2017.
Wow. That is very good. I don't have to ask, because I know you and your department have been working very hard, and I'm real pleased about that.
Ms. Sewell stated her guess a long time ago last year.
Well, your efforts are not in vain, and we do appreciate that. Thank you for that break, and that means the city of Perry is moving forward, and that's a good thing. That's a very good thing. Thank you. From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I'm asking you to hand the check to you, so you can give it to Ms. King. How about that?
I can take care of it.
Thank you, sir. From the Department of Police or Services, Mr. Dye?
I'll take your other check.
Good try. Thank you, sir. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
Making sure I have nothing evil.
Very good. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. From our media specialist, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, I just wanted to remind everyone about the town hall meeting that we're having. It's District 2's town hall meeting, and they're doing it in lieu of the walk with Mayor and council. It's a little cold right now, so this might be a better option. It will be at Matt Arthur Elementary School, January 30th at 5:30 PM. The focus will be District 2, but it is obviously open to all our citizens, anyone that wants to come, and we hope to see you all there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. McMurray, anything for your department?
Nothing else tonight.
Very good. That's everybody in that item. Item 18 are general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council on any item at this time?
It's new in the year. I haven't gotten anything ready yet, Mayor.
Mr. Wood, I anxiously await the first thing that you bring to us. As you do. Thank you. Item 19 are mayor items. I just have a few. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, the 16th of January, at 5:00 PM for the pre-council meeting, and at 6:00 PM for the council meeting. We will not have a work session on the 15th because that is going to be a holiday on October 7th, on Martin Luther King Jr. I remind council that Mayor's Day, the Georgia Municipal Associations meeting is coming up on January 19th through the 22nd in Atlanta. Ms. Palmer's already told you about the District 2 town hall meeting on January 30th in place of the Walk of Mayor and Council. I too would like to thank the citizens of Perry for your faith and confidence in myself as mayor. It has been an honor and a privilege and pleasure to serve these last two terms, and I'm looking forward to my third term as mayor for the citizens of the city of Perry. I have quite a council to work with. These men and women run the city of Perry, and it is my privilege to work alongside them for the accomplishments that we have made, not only in 2017, but significant projects that we currently have underway and have planned for 2018 and beyond. Our staff does a fantastic job, but everything that we pass them with, and they keep us in line, and that includes Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Holder. The holder keeps me out of jail, and Mr. Gilmore fusses every now and then, which is his job, making sure that we do things and consider all angles for the things that come before us. It is a cohesive team, we don't always agree, as you have probably seen. However, we do present a united front, and for that, I'm deeply appreciative, as are the citizens of Perry. It is, I think, the best place to live, work, and play. There is, barring none. And the leadership that these men and women provide is such and none, and my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you goes out. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Also, it cannot go without saying, we have a young lady that has been every builder and recorded these meetings from our channel 100. Ms. Mary Grace Stito, is that right? Will you please stand? Today is her birthday. Happy birthday. Thank you for your efforts, we do appreciate it.
I love being here.
And we love having you. Thank you, thank you so much. Council, before you leave, I have some items that require your signature. But before we get to that, if nothing else comes before us, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session by the purpose of real estate. There's a motion in the second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your interest and participation.